Welcome, everybody. We are here Thursday, November 20th for a city commission workshop. And we're going to start with the call to order. Go ahead, Maurice.
Okay, so I'll take role. Commissioner Joseph.
Present.
Commissioner Stuyvesant.
Here.
Commissioner Viscara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Svechn is absent, so we have a quorum show.
So we're going to start with special presentations with item 2A. Go ahead, Maurice.
So 2A is the photo contest winners for the 2026 desktop calendar.
Okay, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. I'm happy to be here again to celebrate the talented photographers who captured the unique beauty of Sunny Isles Beach. Residents and visitors have submitted their best photos, and this year, we're proud to feature images from 16 different photographers in our 2026 desktop calendar. First, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Elvira Gattina, our city's graphic designer, who did another fantastic job designing this year's cover and calendar, as well as Vanessa Vera, who puts a lot of work into managing the contest. So as I call each winner's name, you can come up to the front for your award and stay here so we can take a group photo at the end. First, our cover photo is by Moses Ban. Moses is a professional photographer who owns his own photography business, and his winning photo is a beautiful aerial view of Sunny Isles Beach. Our introduction page is by Deborah Brochero. Deborah is from Argentina and fell in love with Sunny Isles Beach after visiting 15 years ago. Ever since, she and her family have been making memories here during their visits, and she's honored to be a small part of Sunny Isles Beach history. January is by Alicia Carrera. Alicia is a talented artist who enjoys acrylic painting and landscape photography. February, we have David Virgil. David has been a resident of Sunny Isles Beach for 15 years. He enjoys taking photos of different sights throughout the city as a hobby, whether the stunning architecture, serene beach views, or the greenery of our city parks. March is John Cohen. John is a Canadian photographer who moved from Montreal to Florida, where he enjoys capturing landscapes, cityscapes, and seascapes. He has transformed his passion into a successful career. April is Philippe Lazry. Philippe is a commercial photographer based in Miami specializing in architecture, real estate, and luxury lifestyle imagery. May, we have Carmen Diaz. Carmen is a blessed mother and grandmother. June, Demetrius Borges. Demetrius is a professional photographer and filmmaker specializing in aerial, real estate, and wedding photography. He is an FAA licensed drone pilot and captures landscapes, properties, and special moments. July is by Noam Tal. Noam is a photographer from Miami with a respected presence in the photography world. After discovering his passion early, he quickly became known for his creativity, precision, and personalized approach. Today, he continues to capture Miami's most iconic locations for a variety of publication. August is Martin Davies. Martin is a retired high school principal from Nottingham, England, who has visited Sunny Isles Beach since 1992. He has witnessed its transformation to a vibrant city and considers it his second home. September is Carol Perez. Carol is a Sunny Isles Beach resident, realtor, and passionate traveler who loves capturing the world's beauty with a camera, especially in places like Sunny Isles Beach where light, ocean, and life come together perfectly. October is Sonia Fia. Born in St. Petersburg, Russia, and now based in Miami, Sonia is an artist and student at the University of Miami, where she is pursuing her BFA in sculpture, and her creative practice spans sculpture, installation, painting, and photography. November is Juan Munoz. Juan is a chiropractor and has been a hobbyist photographer for seven years. His specialty is seascapes and fine art photography, and his favorite spot is the Newport Pier to capture the morning sunrise. December, Caglar Guzelle. Caglar is a resident of Sunny Isles Beach and photography enthusiast who enjoys capturing the city's unique light and coastline. His work focuses on simple, quiet moments and the beauty of everyday life. Our photography page is Guillermo Cardona. Guillermo has been living in Sunny Isles Beach for five years. He is a Colombian and American citizen, the author of seven books, and the principal of Miami Virtual School. He is happily married with three children and two grandchildren. And last but not least is Risa Brito on our Connect With Us page. Risa is a cosmetologist with a passion for capturing life's beauty through her lens. For the past 13 years, photography has been her artistic outlet, allowing her to see the world from unique perspectives. All right? So that's everyone. So. Mayor and Commissioner, if you could join us down here so we can all take a photo. And congratulations to all of you. We're very grateful you participate in this contest. And we have calendars in the back of chambers, and your bags also have two calendars in for each of you.
The great text. You can ask for it. It's late. It's right there. That, that. That should be your three points. We knew it. I think. Go to. The time they can't make it through. Do I need to build a speech? And this is a kid on magic. That is saying that you're in here. We see him. I don't know that he had. Yeah. The turn. I mean. Yeah. Now it's hard to see. Cause you watch it. Yes. Yeah. This is me. Yeah.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, we are going to move the next item to B, which is the Florida City Week Writing Contest Winners, down to the end of the meeting just to give these students a chance to come over from the school.
Okay.
So.
I agree.
We're going to go in now to discussion items. 3A is a discussion and an update on the speed limit reduction and traffic calming strategies.
Okay. So we've been talking about this. I mean, I just wanted to basically get an update and understand what has transpired since the time we spoke about keeping the speed limit at 20 miles per hour in our internal streets for the city of Sunny Isles Beach. I know that after we had a couple of discussions with the county, we had the public also participate in some presentations. And I know that the county and some county representatives, Mickey Steinberg's office and some other elected officials have gotten involved. So first, I wanted to understand where we stand at the 20 miles per hour. Okay, I wanted to get an update as we had spoken. And also, I know that while we were in conversations with Miami-Dade County, they had brought up some traffic calming strategies and things that could be implemented to help, obviously, the city, the community. So if I could hear a little bit about what's going on, I would appreciate that.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for asking. The county commission is going to have a resolution. I got an update this morning, December 2nd.
Okay.
To be on their agenda that would pave the way, pave the way for us to be able to go and pursue reducing it to 20 miles.
Did you write that one out?
I did it.
Or you just?
Just came to me.
Yeah, awesome.
To reduce it 20 miles per hour with their blessing.
Yeah.
In the meantime, for the traffic calming, we did contract with a consultant named Cal Chan.
Okay.
They're the ones who did the design for us for 183rd Street left-hand turn that you'll be on the agenda considering tonight. They do traffic studies. They perform, they do the civil work for traffic calming improvements. So we're working with them on a design that we could then submit to Miami-Dade County to get it approved.
Okay, okay. Do we know now that the county commission's resolution? Do we have a timeline on that? If they approve, let's say they approve to allow us to keep the speed limit at 20 miles per hour, is there anything that we need to do? I mean, do you know a little bit about the implementation of that?
So after they prove, if they approve it, it will have the guidelines, the criteria. I'm sure we're still going to have to do another traffic study and submit that to them, but it wouldn't benefit us to do it in advance without knowing what they're going to ask for.
Okay, okay, understood, understood. And now regarding the traffic calming strategies, aside from the left turn, do we know? Cause I know that the county serving, well, yeah, the county is giving us ideas, correct? And we need to implement them?
It's everything that's permitted in the traffic code.
Okay.
And it includes speed humps, narrowing intersections so that they are safer. You know, you have to, you can't kind of make a rolling stop. So improvements to intersections and speed humps.
Okay, okay. Now, you know, included in that, I would like to see also, you know, bike lanes. I mean, we talk a lot about scooters. And I wanted to see, once, you know, the county starts moving and we start implementing some of these traffic calming studies, I would like to see perhaps some bike lanes, some scooter lanes, something where probably the markings are a little bit more clear and we could keep everybody safer.
We, we've been working with Cal Chan since that meeting over in the spring, I think. And our preliminary plans do have a bike lane. It's actually a two-way bike lane. It will require a lot of roadwork to move curbs. We're going to lose a lot of trees. But our goal was to present that to you in January to see and make sure that everyone, the commission is good with the trade-offs.
Right, okay.
Okay, and step one of that, I mean, knowing that that was hopefully forthcoming is why the pedestrian, emergency pedestrian bridge has that green bike lane essentially. When we repaved that, we put the green lane there that would fall in line with where we plan to go with the rest of that.
Is there any way we could put like a green? You know how you have the bike lane on Collins? And it's painted white and with the sun, you can barely see it sometimes? So is there any way we could paint that green or the county? Not the county, if that could paint that green?
Um, the state?
I know we have the discussion before, yeah.
The state has very strict regulations on what that can be. We can ask them, but because it's a shared lane and not a dedicated bike lane.
Got it.
I don't anticipate that they would approve that.
Is there anything that could be done? Let's say that we cannot paint the green. Is there anything that they can do so it's a lot more clear?
We will ask the question.
Yeah, please. Yeah, cause I get concerned sometimes the way the sun hits, you're driving, you see somebody with a bike right in the middle of the lane, and you're driving, and I live here. I've lived here basically most of my life. So somebody has not from here and is just kind of like using, you know, Collins Avenue as a thoroughways, which, you know, the majority of people that come through here do. I just want to make sure how we could make it safer. Yeah.
We will ask.
Yeah. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Stuyvesant, Commissioner Joseph, any comments on this item?
Yes, I actually was up in Sarasota, and it turned out they had in their newspaper the same situation regarding the same situation that we have here with their county. Sorry, they were actually fighting for and winning on the fact that they were being allowed to maintain their 20 mile an hour speed limits. So I had sent that to Susan. She looked into it. And even though we're a different county and we're dealing with FDOT and Miami-Dade, there are some aspects that would apply to us that we garner in order to help us.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, we got support from people in the county, so I hope. It looks like it's going in the right direction, but it's government and it's politics. So let's hope it keeps on the right direction, yeah. Any comments, Commissioner Viscara? No, you're good, okay. Well, thank you very much. I have nothing.
We have all of the students here now, so let's go back and consider the special presentation for the 2025 Florida City Week Writing Contest Winners.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Myra Aliman, Chief of Staff. So last month, we celebrated Florida City Week with a writing contest for our sixth through eighth grade residents on the theme, "What Makes Your City Special." The competition was very close, but today, we are proud to recognize our five winners. Their essays stood out for their creativity and for the thoughtfulness ways they describe what makes our city special. To our parents, teachers, and schools, thank you for supporting these bright minds. And to our winners, congratulations. We are so proud of you. Keep learning, keep asking questions, excuse me, and keep believing that your ideas can help shape the future. I will now call each winner down. So we have Elizabetha Chiracova. Dmitri Sempil. Isabella Sanchez Garcia.
You guys are the ones. I. Soon as they're in here. Yeah.
Cielo Orchut. And India Sherekow.
All right.
Thank you and congratulations once again to our Florida City Government Week winners.
Yeah. So before we go down for the picture, just wanted to see if anybody from the commission would like to comment. I know you, Jennifer, have something.
Yeah, I did. I mean, I wanted, first of all, I was just happy to have papers to grade again. But I was, I was actually really impressed, and I can see how it was hard to choose because the whole batch was really, really good. And I was, I was just really impressed with the structure. We had thesis statements, we had nice conclusions, transitions, all very nice. And, but the, what I really liked about it was being able to see Sunny Isles through your eyes. The things that you liked, that you highlighted, and what, how the city embraces you and how you receive it. And it was, that was my favorite part. And because there were a lot of, there were all good essays, but not everybody was a winner. So I just wanted to read some lines from everybody so you can, so everybody can just get a feel what we read. It like, Sunny Isles isn't just where I live, it's where I belong. Collins Avenue makes everything in the city organized, so you can't get lost. Unlike many other cities, this city has a lot of events, from holidays to just movie nights. The city makes holidays so much fun. Whenever my family comes to visit, they always compliment the design of our buildings. The best thing is, unlike other cities, the officers here are super nice. Sunny Isles is very diverse. There are people from around the world, and the stores reflect that. There's also a place called The Spot that makes Sunny Isles even better. Almost all the buildings have a pool, gym, and valet parking, making everywhere a great place to live. The wonderful mix of cultures and ethnicities is combined into one happy community. To be honest, the city is really safe. In Sunny Isles Beach, there are a lot of bilingual people. Just by walking down the street, you can hear English, Spanish, Russian, and even French. The first time I walked down Collins Avenue, I was astonished by the stunning buildings. However, I also got to read the benefits of the quieter areas near the bay. So you get to live in a quiet apartment or feel the bustling city-like energy. That's what you guys did. And for that, I'd like to do another hand, if that's okay. So you guys did great. So. That's all for me.
Jerry, would you like to say something?
So I was quite impressed with all of the essays. Naturally, I was required to put my specific numbers. And I compliment everyone for their hard work and emphasis on how Sunny Isles makes them feel like home. And I just appreciate your efforts. It was, everyone did a great job. Thank you.
Continue, continue getting involved, okay? So continue, there are going to be more programs, more activities, other ways that you guys can continue being involved. This is your city. Some of you were born here for the essays. Some are new to the city, but you learn to love it the way we do. I've been here in Sunny Isles for the last 18 years. I came from Venezuela here. I thought from here, I was going to go somewhere, and I stayed. So, and it's for a reason, and you guys were able to translate that in your papers. So I really admire you coming forward and putting yourself out there for this competition. Hopefully, in the future, we're going to have a lot more people participating, but you guys did amazing. What they say is true, it was really hard to grade it. I might be one of the last ones to submit it because I could not make up my mind. But yeah, we need to have winners, and you guys are the winners today. And not only because of that, but like I said, because you guys are participating. One thing that I love that you guys wrote and were able to express is the love for our PD, our police department, how safe you guys feel here. And one of you guys said, even though there is issues with many police departments all over America, that's not the case here in Sunny Isles. Those are part of our family. And you reflect that in many of the papers, people, some of you guys were talking about the police department. And that was great and amazing, fantastic. Hopefully, that can translate to the world, you know? And everybody can, we can continue and start getting, or we can start getting along so much better. So I congratulate you, and please continue being, participating. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah. To me, first of all, thank you because, you know, your essays were all great. Even, everybody to me is a winner. Obviously, we have the ones that were chosen. You did a spectacular job. But to me, what I read, it was a gift. It was a gift to me. You put a smile on my face, and then you made me realize certain things because sometimes you get into your bubble, you know, there's issues here, issues there. But it makes you appreciate, you highlighted the good. You know, you highlighted, you know, the type of city that we live in. You know, and it just makes you be grateful for what we have. You know, you mentioned different things like safety, the events that we have, the multiculturalism that we have in the city, you know, the restaurants, you know, the different offerings and the different languages that you hear spoken throughout the city. So to me, it was something where it kind of, you know, made me realize, it woke me up again and said, hey, you know what? We live in a nice city, and we need to be grateful. So to me, it was a gift. It was, I was so happy to have been able to read your essays because it just kind of changed my mindset a little bit and say, hey, we need to be thankful. So thank you very much, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I have the following statements to read on behalf of the mayor.
Okay.
Per me. It reads, "Good afternoon, members of the city commission, city staff, teachers, families, students, and friends. Thank you all for being here to celebrate our students and for making this essay contest happen. To the winners, congratulations. Your essays were outstanding, honest, heartfelt, and full of pride for our city. You've earned every bit of this recognition. Just as importantly, every student who submitted an essay deserves our praise. Each of you took the time to think about what you truly love about the city, its people, its parks, its beaches, its spirit, and you put those feelings into words. The kind of reflection and care is what makes this community strong, and it's exactly what gives me hope for our future. I'm sorry I can't be there with you tonight in person. I read every essay, and I want you to know how much they meant to me. They remind me, they reminded me of why I do this job and how lucky we are to have young people who have already, who already love the city so deeply. Thank you, Myra, for organizing this contest and giving our students the chance to share their voices. Students, keep noticing what's good, keep speaking up, keep caring. This city is going to be in great hands. Congratulations to everyone who participated, and thank you again." So I think a picture with this. And like a slam. The old. Okay, okay. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, we are now going to go back to discussion items. At the request of Commissioner Joseph, item 3B has been deferred. And also just to note, and if we have the consensus for the commission, Commissioner Viscara would like to add on a legislative update at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so 3C is a discussion regarding the Golden Shores Undergrounding Project.
Yes. Okay, so I had put this. Yes. Okay, so I had put this item on the agenda in order for the city manager to give us an update regarding Golden Shores as to FPNL and also the cable companies, what the status is, how they're progressing. I know for myself that AT&amp;T has still not, even though they say they're installing fiber, they still have not as of yet. And Breeze Line is not doing a fiber at all. So I would like to please have an update.
We have one available.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I spoke at length with Deputy Manager Simpson and she's gonna give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, we have two date. As of Monday, 105 homes completed, 15 that are vacant lots, so we consider those completed cuz we don't have to do anything with them. So that's 120. And we have 46 that we still need a permit for. The rest are in process. We did get an email from AT&amp;T. They, they are working on some path issues. That just came in this morning. I haven't had a chance to find out what those path issues are.
Are they doing fiber or are they not?
They are doing fiber as a totally separate project. So for this project, they were, as we talked about before, like for like, and then part of their own upgrades, their own business upgrades to get more customers and better service, they're doing fiber on their own.
Okay, so the fiber, originally they said to myself and to Senator Pizzo that they were doing fiber at no additional cost.
Correct.
To the city or to residents.
Correct.
So originally they're installing cable and then they're going to come back and install fiber?
As they do with many of their community upgrades, the fiber is an upgrade. So because we were bringing down the lines, they weren't ready to do fiber there yet. So they were just replacing like with like. Part of their business plan to upgrade included this area for a future project, which I believe is in 2026.
Okay, so we have a timeframe. Now, the houses that haven't supplied the permits to the city, what is our strategy to get them in compliance?
We're gonna work with code to find better contacts and how we can reach out to them. We've literally gone to the homes, we've posted notices, we've mailed notices to no avail.
Well, a lot of those, I presume, are rentals, so we need to
Correct.
use Miami Dade My Home or whatever to find, because they all have mailing addresses.
They do.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding this. When are we looking at completion date for this project?
It's all going to depend on those 46 that we can't get a permit for.
We're, okay.
We cannot bring down the lines until every single home is connected.
What happens if they don't answer?
We will cross that bridge.
Hey. Like the, like the company from the, for the seawall, for Swisso. God, okay, all right.
Oh, I have one other question, sorry. So our cost, if, does it go up because we're delayed with people, you know, not complying?
As of now, there's been no cost increases due to time.
Okay, but is that, could there be?
I'm gonna guess no because we've already purchased all of the product and usually the price increases are due to product increases. But it's gonna depend on how long. If it's within the next few months while they're still working in the area, no change.
Okay, so for, for the city, it suits us to go after these people more quickly than?
Absolutely, yes. We want the project completed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item is 3D, discussion regarding banning e-scooters and e-bikes.
Okay, this is also my item. And I'm trying to discover what the results of our survey was regarding banning scooters from the sidewalks.
Vice Mayor?
Who's coming?
Yep. We've done a tremendous amount of community outreach, as you all know, and we're also looking at the legalities of how some other cities are enforcing this. And what we're going to do is bring you back the results of all of that for you to give us some direction on how we can move the process forward. We continue with our enforcement as you've directed us to do. We're doing daily enforcement through the police department with scooters. But this is a broader area that we need to study a little bit more and continue compiling the data, including the surveys and our outreach with all of the residents.
Okay, so I can continue. We had this survey and the results were completed when?
We closed the survey on Amy's here, she just gave me this information. Hold on.
It was around the summer.
It was, I think, I thought September 22nd or something like that.
Yeah.
And the survey ended. So shortly after that, we should have had results.
Yes, we have the results. There's gonna be a full presentation by the committee that's headed up by Julio for the January meeting, when we would have developed a code for you to consider as well.
Okay, so we do have some
Everything, yes. All of that data is in, the survey is closed. I believe it was September 20th.
Yes.
And all of that will be presented to you at the January meeting along with our proposal for how to move forward. They've also looked into what all the other municipalities in Miami Dade County are doing and trying to align ours, you know, with what we're learning is effective.
Okay, okay, so we'll look forward to that in January. Okay, so.
Any other comments from the commission regarding this item?
No.
No, okay.
Next item is 3E, discussion regarding the city of North Miami Beach's fees for water service.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So more and more people are contacting me regarding their water bills that are just going higher and higher. I know that North Miami Beach services several cities and I had asked for the rates as they pertain to Sunny Isles and other surrounding cities, actually all of the cities that North Miami Beach services as to their per gallon rate compared to what Sunny Isles is in order to determine if we're being charged fairly and when it was that the rates were first determined or negotiated and whether it's time to maybe renegotiate these fees.
Go ahead. Anybody wanna comment? It's just city manager.
We've done some initial research and it seems as if we pay, we being the city, pay the same fees as the other cities that are in contract with North Miami Beach. And the fees are also limited by state statute. So in terms of any negotiation, we'd have to research that further. But I am not sure that we're in a good bargaining position regarding that. We can certainly look at it.
Okay.
I would like to please receive the rates for that, that North Miami Beach charges to all of the cities that they service, so I can compare them to Sunny Isles rates.
Vice Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
It's a 25% surcharge for us, for all of them, for anyone outside of their jurisdictional boundary, yes. 25% surcharge.
So North Miami Beach pays less?
Correct, the residents do.
The residents pay less, okay, yeah. We want that rate.
Yes, but I would still like
It's the utility.
I would like to see, please, the per gallon rate and then what each city is charged. I know it's easy to say 25% across the board, but I would like to have those numbers on a page.
Okay, the rates are published on their website. I'll print that for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Okay, so we have the next item, which is the add-on lead legislative update by Commissioner Viscarra.
Okay, thank you. This will be brief. I, I just wanted to just get back on the radar because we, I feel like we just finished the other one cuz the budget ran into the summer and you just get out of, right, you get a little break and, and, you know, officially the session begins in January, but there's already committee activity and we already have some things that have been submitted. I sent out a newsletter with, with some of the things that I told you around budget time that we were probably gonna be seeing and it's coming to fruition, which is all the property tax bills. The good news is that it's not as blunt an approach as was originally stated that, oh, no property taxes. Because they realized very quickly, well, how are you gonna fund the schools? How are you, you know, so now a lot of these bills that are coming forward is property tax on XYZ, but, but not the school part. So the schools look like they're, they're not on the block. But municipalities will be. Our, our, our budget is going, is going to be impacted if all of these go through. But what they've done is they've broken them up into different ones. So if they all pass, we'll probably be in trouble, but if some pass, we'll probably be okay. And I'll just give you some examples. Well, and then there's other issues, it's not just property taxes. The one that I highlighted is one that we've talked about before, the suits against the government. We, this is like, what, year four or five that we're talking about it? And that's the limits on, that, I mean, a government would need to pay in a lawsuit. We all agree it needs to go up, but if the, if what's being proposed is not reasonable, then it fails. And it looks like we're on that path again. Because small cities with small budgets can't, wouldn't, can't handle a lawsuit. So when, when you do a state law and it applies across the board, you have to consider not the Sunny Isles beaches of the world, but the smaller towns. Property, the property tax stuff is elimination of non-school property tax for homesteads. Face down elimination of non-school property tax for homesteads, that's a different one. Because that's the face down. Elimination of non-school property tax for homesteads for persons age 65 or older, so that's more narrow. Assessed home value, homestead exemption of non-school property tax. Property insurance relief, homestead exemption of non-school property tax. Accrued Save Our Homes property tax benefit and modification of limitations on property assessment increases. So that, and they're just getting started, so we're probably gonna see more. But they're breaking it into different things. So for example, as I've stated, like a property break for homesteaded people over 65, makes sense, but on across the board, it becomes problematic if you're a local government. So that's the update. We're gonna be updating the website and, you know, we're gonna be tracking it like we did before. And that's it.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
No, no questions.
What'd you say, Jerry?
No questions.
No questions, okay, all right. Well, meaning that, Jerry.